Thank you. Welcome, everybody. Our staff and pensions on the 14th of September. Welcome to all the officers and also councillors. We're still waiting upon John Horner, who is slightly delayed, but I'm pretty sure he will be joining us. Before I begin, we do have a colleague that's no longer with us. And I just wanted to spend maybe just a couple of, say, a couple of words to say that Bob Stephens very sadly passed away. And I, for one, as Chair, miss him very much. And he was a very valuable member of our team and also was very well thought of on staff and pensions. And he's been on this committee for a very long time. So condolences to all his family and to his colleagues. And we miss him very much. I'm not sure if councillors want to say anything. I'm happy for you to do so if you would like to now. Thank you.
It's very simple. He was a very decent person. He was really keen to do right by the good people of Warwickshire. And he had diplomatic skills as well.
Thank you, Bill.
I think, and I think his contribution to the work of the council and to the community was very far reaching, very widely spread. There are many of us that will miss his lead and his contribution to so many things that we've done over the past. So, thank you.
Thank you, Neil. So I'm going to move on to the agenda and thank you for all those comments. First item on the agenda is apologies. And Isabel, I think we have one today.
We have apologies from councillor Andy Gens.
Thank you, Isabel. If there's moving on to members' disclosures and pecuniary and non pecuniary interests. Do we have any members? No. All good. Welcome, John.
John was just trying to say something, but he's muted.
Sorry, I was just looking at the various people on the meeting. No, it's all right, I wasn't. My lips, I think no noise was coming out, so I was muting myself.
Thank you, John. Okay, so we'll move to the minutes. And I'll just go through the pages. Any observations or comments on page five? Page six? Page seven? Page eight? Page nine? And then finally, page 10? No? And then we've also got another set of minutes for Thursday, the 23rd of July. Again, going through the pages, page 11. And I believe that and page 12, 13 are the last pages on that. Any comments, observations? No, that's fine. Isabel, can you send me the minutes later so I can sign them later, please?
Yes, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to the first report, which is the annual
Can I just ask a question? And I've only just noticed this, that on page 13, it says Pension Fund Investment Subcommittee, councillors Bill Gifford, John Horner, Wallace Redford, Bob Stephens and Alan Webb.
Yeah.
And I'm on it as well.
How have they forgotten you, Neil?
I wasted the last three and a half hours, if I'm not supposed to be there. And most of the weekend reading the papers.
Well, I'm sure you are supposed to be there, Neil, and we'll have those amended. And thank you for noticing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John here, I think, yeah, Neil, you're on it. And I think it's come off it because he, isn't he an independent now?
He is.
Yeah, that's the reason.
And I've been on it for, well, since before Christmas.
No, this would be just a copy straight from last year, I suspect.
So we'll amend those and we'll take Alan off. Thank you. Thank you, well noticed.
Should have noticed it earlier.
No, no, it's fine. We'll amend those and I'll try, I'll sign them later on. Okay.
He did you at the pensions meeting.
Okay, moving on. Annual Workforce Gender Pay Gap Report. I'm just looking along the bottom to see which officer will be presenting.
That'll be me.
Thank you, Kira. Do you want to begin? And I'll put myself on mute.
Thank you. And so this is the annual workforce report that comes to you yearly. But this year it'll look a bit different. So previously we've reported on our workforce statistics and our gender pay gap in line with legislation. But this year, it was felt that as a county council, we should voluntary report on our ethnicity pay gap as well. So that is now included within this report. Whilst ethnicity pay gap reporting isn't legislation yet, it looks as though it will most likely come in. So we thought we'd get ahead of the game and start looking at our position, which from the report you'll see is quite positive. And I suppose I'll just draw you to the key points of the report that are found in point five. Some of the things have come out of it. So I won't bore you by repeating everything that you've probably already read. And so I suppose I'll just open it up to questions, see if anyone's got any thoughts, comments, questions.
Bill, do you want to go first?
Yes, yes, I was interested in that the ethnicity pay gap is is very slight, but actually it's surprising in that it's the white British were slightly behind the BAME community in terms of pay. So, but in essence, it comes to when you're looking at those levels, you're not there isn't really much, there isn't really much of a gap at all. But it's interesting that it's slightly a reverse gap than most of us would have expected. And it compares very well with our Warwick District Council by comparison. But interesting, thank you.
Neil, would you like to ask your question of Kira?
Thank you. There's a whole range here. The first one is that we appear to have increased the number of zero hours contracts. And I wonder why we're doing that rather than going part time for people. That's on page three of the report. Moving on to the top of the next page. Do we know why 17 people went elsewhere? Because that, from our apprenticeships, because that is over 11%, which is a significant proportion. Was it because we didn't offer them the job opportunities that we should have done at the end of that period? Going on to page five, 2.31. Again, a high percentage of leavers have given five years or less service. Do we know any reasons why that is happening? It's good that we're doing these interviews, but are we getting that information out of it? And then the other thing that I was trying to say really is more of an observation. And that is that we are using out of date figures for the ethnic mix of Warwickshire. They're 2011. And I realize the reason for that is that that was when the last census is. But it will be interesting next year to see, or it might probably be the year after at least, to see how the mix has changed since that census was done. Because from anecdotal evidence and my own feelings of people I know and so on, I would think that the ethnic mix has changed quite considerably in the last nine or 10 years. And that, you know, we're getting far more people from different ethnic backgrounds working, particularly in the low paid jobs, but not all in the low paid jobs, right across the range of our workforce within Warwickshire. And it makes me wonder whether the mix that we have in the council still reflects so favourably as it does from these figures. Does that make sense?
No, absolutely. And I think it's a really interesting point that I think, well, with how, if we start working more flexibly, you know, we might have a workforce made up of people who don't live in Warwickshire, like myself, I live in Leicester. And if we have a more flexible offer where people are able to work remotely, actually, that might increase the diversity of our workforce, because we might have people coming from a lot further afield to work for Warwickshire County Council. And like you said, I suspect from 2011, the demographic of local populations has changed significantly. So it'll be interesting when that new census comes out, what the difference is, absolutely. And I think with the point about round leavers, why are those people leaving us? As part of our people strategy, we've looked at how we when people leave, what that process looks like. So we are now capturing data to understand better why people have taken the decision to leave Warwickshire County Council. That's only been in place for several months. So we haven't got any real kind of hard data with that yet. But hopefully, over the next coming months, we'll be able to utilise some of that in terms of understanding it a bit more better. And I suppose just to note as well, as part of the council's Equality, Diversity and Inclusion Project, one of the high level actions with that is looking and making sure that we have the infrastructure in place to be able to measure progress and identify key issues and barriers. And so that is a task and finish group that has just been set up to explore all of these avenues a little bit more.
So that'll take in the apprenticeships as well?
Yeah, so that'll bring in the zero hours contracts. So looking at the report, the zero hours contract seems to be increasing within the people directorate, which has impacted the overall figure. And so we'll be working quite closely with individual directorates as well to understand why we're seeing these emerging patterns.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kira. John, you've got your hand up. Would you like to ask a question? You're on mute, John.
Right, yes, I would like to answer a question. I'll put my hand down, that's good. Yeah, it relates to this percentage of BAME. It would be interesting to know how they split, the BA and NE split. Because I think we're a lot more Asian perhaps than the other two. But it's also, when I was, when I was doing the fire service amongst others, the Home Secretary was Theresa May at the time. And she, I remember going to a meet, to a sort of summons to a meeting along with everybody else in London. And she was bang on about, we had to represent the ethnic mix of our communities. So actually, the thought I had was that, yes, you know, if the data is wrong, and it's not 11.8%, then that's probably fine. It might be 15%, but we need to make sure that we don't get out of kilter with our community. Because that is one of the areas, certainly in this case of the police and the fire, was when it's skewed, it causes problems. You know, that may be more sensitivity with the fire and the police, I don't know. But that's the general gist, is that we should be reflective of the general mix. And yes, it's good to have lots of BAME, but on the other hand, you know, don't let, don't forget this problem of the white, the, yeah, the underclass of the white, white underclass that is, that we do have in Warwickshire. You know, you just have to go around Southlem. And that's a big issue. So that was just a thought there, is it would be nice to have accurate equivalent numbers.
And that's a bit, a big point and push that we need to carry on doing is ensuring that our disclosure rate for these groups is as high as possible. And I know the disclosure rate for ethnicity at the moment is in the 70%. So, you know, that's a great disclosure rate when you look at other organisations. But actually, we've still got, you know, around 25% of our organisation not disclosing their ethnicity. And once we get that up, that will then impact the figures as well. And because when we comparison, we have to remove those to make it comparable to the census data. So, so, yeah, I think, I think with stats and stuff, you know, you're only as good as your data. And that's something that we're really working hard to increase that disclosure rate. But we know that comes with a culture of trust and not everyone wants to disclose that. So, you know, it's not an overnight solution. And it's going to be a, be a thing that we're going to have to keep drip feeding and drip feeding on a regular basis to try and increase.
Thank you, Kira. I was just playing with the mute button there, sorry. Barnaby, I know we were doing a bit, some work, sorry to bring you in just on this piece. But I know Fire and Rescue were doing a big piece around the BAME community and getting them more involved in Fire and Rescue. How is that project doing? Just as a side question.
The project continues to, thank you for bringing me in incident, it's good to be given the opportunity. Imran and the wider county council equality team, I wouldn't want to exclude Kira from any of this, continue to push that one forward. Our recruitment has been, has many things, has been derailed by COVID. So we haven't had a recruits course in the last six months. But the work, the community engagement work carries on, both in terms of trying to make the ethnic populations more interested in joining the fire service, because we know there's a challenge. Our last intake had one Asian gentleman who's, he's actually got, he's taken a degree in Fire and Rescue. I didn't even know there was such a thing, but he's better qual, much better qualified than I am. He's got a degree in Fire and Rescue. I have to say, his parents still at the passing out parade were saying what my parents are saying 28 years ago. His mother said, well, that's not the job, I envisaged my son undertaking. And I did sort of point out that that parallel and that I hadn't done badly over the years, you know, that there was a career to be had. So we continue to press, we continue to try to make progress, but I can't give you any updated recruitment figures because we haven't done any recruitment, but we keep going at it.
Brilliant, thank you, Barn.
We're also selling, to pick up councillor Horner's point, certainly we are selling the benefits of a more diverse workforce to our workforce, because it literally opens doors for us that previously were closed to us. So we're doing both hands, if you like.
Brilliant, thank you for that. Kira, thank you for answering questions. If there's no further observations or questions, can I move the recommendations I set out on page 15? Or one of 10 of the report, please? Can we just have a show of hands, please? I think that's unanimous. Thank you, Kira. And thank you, team.
Enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you, Kira. Moving on then to employers leaving and joining the pension fund. I'm looking at the screen to see, Vicky, are you going through this with us?
Yes, I am, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, over to you.
Thank you. And so this report just gives you the information about new employers that are accessing the local government pension scheme. Those that are listed on this schedule are all academies, schools converting to academy. And so an academy is automatically a scheme employer, so they do come into and have access to the local government pension scheme. So if there's any questions, I don't think there's any points that I need to raise, it's just a list of schools at the top that will be joining us. The dates are at the minute provisional. So we would be looking at Arden Fields joining us on the 1st of September and some in September. I think some of these dates do tend to slip slightly, but these are all the schools converting to academy from September to April.
Okay, the report's pretty straightforward. There's nothing controversial from what I've read and seen. So is there any questions, councillors, that you'd like to ask, Vicky?
Well, I'll just make a comment about it. And that is that this, this is about delegation of authority. It's not a discussion of the individual applications. Otherwise, there are three of us who would be unable to vote on it, because it's about this allegation, we still can.
Thank you for that. Neil, if there's no further comments, then can I move the recommendation I set out on Agenda Item Three, please? If you all agree, just wave your hand. Excellent, John's holding his head, so I'm assuming that's raised. Thanks, John. Thank you, Vicky. Okay. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Four. And this is Warwickshire Fire and Rescue Service Vehicle Provision. Barnaby, are you taking this one or is somebody else?
That will be me, councillor.
Okay.
Can you see me?
I can see you.
You can, I've appeared on the screen, that's great, thank you. So, yeah, thanks for your time with this. So this is about staff and pensions confirming the existing arrangements for vehicle provision and to include all brigade managers and area managers for responding to operational incidents. So that's the, that's the chief officer, the two assistant chief officers and two area managers. Now, you perhaps recall that back in June 2018, we, staff and pensions approved the provision for station managers and group managers. And this is really an identical report to include the remainder of our officer cadre. So, and this is largely about just ensuring the organisation has roadworthy vehicles. Because the previous arrangement and the existing arrangement is a, was a concern. So I'll just, I'll just mention a couple of things we had concerns with. So for example, blue light vehicles need to have a higher specification of maintenance. And we couldn't really do that with private vehicles in the way we can when, when the organisation, the county council own the vehicles. We put vehicles generally, not necessarily dangerous, but in more hazardous positions. So for example, fending off a motorways or stopping in the middle of busy roads or going through floodwater, again, a lot easier to control when we, when we own the vehicles. We've had historical concerns with insuring the vehicles. So if we, if we were to have an incident, it was never really tested as to whether insurance companies would cover us. We, we had some officers would get letters, some wouldn't. But it was never really tested as to whether these vehicles or the officers were actually insured. And various other things, for things like, it's not really complying with the pure regs, the provision of and use of work equipment regulations. We couldn't, we carry a lot of equipment in these vehicles, so we couldn't really control the stowage. And also, it's, we're unable to adapt private vehicles for advances in technology as well. So the fact that we don't possess the vehicles, it makes it very difficult if it's an individual's private vehicle. So, so like I said, this is about eliminating the rest of the officers now. We've already done this for station managers and group managers and it's, it's for the remainder to be on the scheme. So we're looking at Skoda four by four vehicles. We've already part rolled this out anyway, just to mention that. But it's to roll out the remainder at brigade manager level and area manager level. The taxation position is this, they are tax exempt, because we say they're for work use, okay? So they're not for private use, they can't go on holiday on them, so they, in them, so that the tax exempt. However, probably would need to say at this stage that the chief officers and the assistant chief officers are actually on the continuous duty system. So, so what that means effectively is whilst we say they're not there for private use, we do allow just a short amount of private mileage for when people are on duty. Because sometimes, you know, certainly over the summer, there've been occasions where some of these officers have been continuously on duty for two or three weeks. So these are just trips out to the local supermarkets or those kind of welfare trips whilst they're on duty. Because otherwise, they would be stuck at home or work all the time. So that, that's just a little bit on that. Okay, so the legislation, we've looked at the legislation very closely with Warwickshire County, County, Council Legal. And we've also had the approach ratified by HMRC. So just a little touch on the financial elements, the financial details are actually in the report about the cost. It's very slightly more expensive than the previous position. But all this is covered in Warwickshire Rescue's transport budget. Okay, so we do actually cover that within existing budgets and don't need additional funding for it. So a little bit more expensive, however, it really does tick a lot of boxes for organisational assurance and reassurance from the, from the, from the risks we feel is associated with this. So, so, yeah, that's, that's my short account of the report.
Thank you for that. There's a few hands gone up, as we would imagine. So Neil, do you want to kick off? And then I've got Bill, I think.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm in favour of accepting this report and this recommendation, but I do have one question. I can't remember where it was or when it was, but it's not that long ago that there was a fire officer who was
who was challenged. I don't think it was this authority, but I'm not sure where, about the use that had been made of his car for personal use. And I, you know, I'm thinking with, from the union side and from the, his operational side, really. What sort of protection is there to make sure that somebody can't come along and say, well, I saw you out in that car. You weren't working. You know, you're running up far too much mileage that way. Is there anything to protect against that sort of pernicious accusation against our staff?
Okay, so a couple of things there. First of all, what I would say, we've been running this for the majority of our officers for over two years now and we haven't encountered any issues like that. But that doesn't mean to say that we wouldn't in the future anyway. We do actually have one of our area managers monitors monthly activity in the vehicles. So, so what that effectively is, if we see, it's just sample auditing, it's sample auditing. So if we see, for example, that a vehicle has gone out at a weekend when that officer isn't on duty, then we will, we will, we will be able to challenge that, we'll be able to look at. So we monitor it, that it's not, it's not open to misuse. But like I said, we've not had an issue today and really, you know, all our officers are well in tune, that they're aware of what they can and what they can't do and what they shouldn't do. But so I think the biggest thing is the fact that, yeah, we, we monitor it.
Yeah. So, so if there was an accusation like that, we are in a very good position to rebut it. You know, I'm looking for protection for our officers here, not, not something to beat them over the head with.
Sure. A very strong position, yeah, because we can justify that. We'll be able to see when they're on duty. So we'll be able to match the journey to whether they were on duty.
Thank you.
Okay.
Barnaby, do you want to come in now?
Yes, if I may, councillor, just to state something that my colleague has implied but not made absolutely clear to councillors, which is, which is that all the vehicles are fitted with trackers, so we do know exactly where they are at all times. So if a member of the public were to say they'd seen one of our vehicles in Blackpool, we could say, well, no, actually, our tracker shows it clearly sitting in the middle of Warwick, just to make that point.
Yeah, I'd forgotten the bit about the tracker in the report.
Thank you. Bill, do you want to go next? And then we've got John.
Very briefly, it seems to me to be a sensible suggestion. The, we're told the cost is, the extra cost is minimal and it's met within the vehicle budget anyway. And it's certainly, I think, should the safety of the public is going to be greater with this as well. Because it's going and, because it's going to mean, when in operation, things are safer. So I think to me, it's one where we wish we should go with it.
Thank, thank you, Bill. John, do you want to come in?
Yeah, sure. I was going to ask about the tracker as well, so that, so that was two of us who missed it in the report. What mileage are you expecting in the seven years? I'm just, seven years is quite a long time for a company car. And I was just doing a drink.
Yeah. Okay, well, I think because they use these to and from work as well, and I think it varies, but, but at the moment, I mean, it can get more accurate detail to you, councillor, if you want it, but I think you're looking at about, looking at different vehicles that we've used, about five or 6,000 a year, maybe a little bit more. But we do have all those details if needed.
Yeah, no, it was more, it's ballpark figure. I mean, 5,000 is quite a small mileage.
Yeah.
Because 35,000 in seven years, that's pretty good.
Yeah.
I once did a hundred.
The allocation in the table is for 9,000, so that's.
No, it's good. No.
I was just about to say that, Neil.
The problem, I think, I think the problem there is I'm basing it on my own mileage because I live approximately two miles away from fire headquarters. And of course, a lot of the mileage has gone down in the last six months, of course, as well. So, so yeah, it's, but then I do have colleagues that live, you know, right, right on, you know, the far reaches of the county as well. So, so yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's probably a little bit more. I think from my point of view, it's less, but other colleagues, you know, in excess of.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Barnaby, did you want to come in or was that a historic hand?
It was only on the mileage, councillor, for, I've done about 7,000 miles in a year, but that includes what you might term a Covid discount. So I'd say that the 9,000 isn't too far off. That's any of the help to councillors.
Okay, thank you for that. So there's no further questions. Can we move the recommendation as laid out, please, councillors? If you could just raise your hand. All agreed? Lovely. There you go, Paul. You can go back and celebrate.
Thank you, councillors. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on to item five of the agenda, we have Pension Fund Administration Impact and Actions, that's Covid-19. And I'm looking at the screen to see who's going to take this one, and we have Chris.
Thanks, Cam. So I'll just introduce this report briefly. This is the second Covid specific update and risk register that the committee's received. We took the same risk register to the investment subcommittee this morning and the focus on that side is investments. The focus on this side is the administration side of things, although you can see the whole risk register with all the issues in it. No major new issues have materialised in terms of dealing with Covid. All of our critical functions are still operating fine in terms of, for example, collecting employer contributions, paying benefits, being able to meet calls, to make investments when they're required and so on. So there's nothing critical that's an issue that's to do with, with Covid that we're aware of. In particular, employer contributions, you recall, last time we mentioned there was a significant concern about whether there'd be a systematic drop off in the ability of employers to make their payments. But that's, that's not materialised. You'll see that there's a little kind of picture on, in section 2.1 of the report. We've reviewed the risk scores this time and you can see that they've, they've dropped. This is because a number of uncertainties where we didn't know what was happening or what was going to play out have, we've got more intelligence about, we've all got experience of the lockdown. We know a lot of things that, how a lot of things have played out. So that's why a number of the risks have calmed down a bit. That doesn't mean they've gone away. The only other thing to say is we've got two risk registers for the Pension Fund. We've got a general big risk register, and we've got this specific one for Covid. The specific Covid risk register is helpful whilst it's new, but we will take stock of whether or not to simplify back to one register for quarter three and just balance the pros and cons of having this split out separately and the confusion potentially of having two registers. That's all I had to say by way of introduction.
Thank you, Chris, but I do, I know we've split the two registers, but I do think this is helpful. Especially because, you know, we've never been in this territory or in these circumstances before. So for me, it's really been helpful to see, you know, where, where the risks are high and low. And it's, I think it's worth having, you know.
If you'd like us to continue it, we can do.
I think it's worth having for now until we know, you know, for sure what's, what's happening in the next six months for certain. I don't seem to have any hands up, so, oh. Neil, Neil snuck in again.
I tried to leave it until everything's been said, so that I don't ask anything silly. It was just to make a point that this morning with the risk registers that we were looking at, it was very encouraging to see that although the first time round, as it were, there was quite a lot of uncertainty and worry about resilience of staff and whether we could deliver everything that we needed to with homeworking and so on. And that it showed up in this morning's meeting, that it was green and that we are now confident that we can work in this way. And I think that's a point that is worth making to the Staff and Pensions Committee, that that risk has been reduced from a risk to a confidence. I think, I don't know whether Chris wants to comment on that.
Yes, so, yeah, we think that across the piece, really, there's a number of things that were uncertain at the start where we've got experience now of how they've played out. Nothing has got worse, nothing new has blown up. And at the moment, touch wood, things are looking okay. There's still risks, so for example, you know, we're much more exposed to the risk of wifi failure, let's say. There's still the risk of if a key staff cohort in a bubble got caught up in all being ill at the same time. That's not really a risk until you start putting everyone in the office together. But you can still control that in different ways. But at the moment, things are, things are looking, well, as I've set out here, okay.
Brilliant. Thank you for that, Chris. That gives us some reassurance, I think, of, of, you know, that we are doing things, how we should be doing them, even though it's unprecedented times. So there are no further questions, looking at the screen. So therefore, if we're all happy, can we move the recommendations I set out on pages 59? Okay, looks like that's unanimous. Brilliant. Moving on then, team. We're getting through it. Okay, Employee Sickness, Absence and Management Report. And that's Kate. Thank you, Kate. Do you want to just introduce the report, please? Thank you.
Of course, yes. Apologies, Rich Thomas was meant to be with us today as well, but he's unable to make it. So he's asked me to cover this item and the recognition item.
Okay, thank you.
In terms of the recommendations, we want the committee to note the performance indication information in relation to management absence for the last year 1920 and to endorse the overall target reduction of 7% for 2021. And to support the committee to support the proactive approach for the health and wellbeing of employees in the developing of a sustainable and resilient workforce. Just to give you a little bit more information, the report covers sickness absence for the financial year April 2019 to March 20. It compares the data with previous years and it excludes absence for non-sickness related reasons such as annual leave, maternity, paternity, adoption leave, et cetera. And it reports both long and short term absences. As stated, the data is already nearly six months out of date as it took us up to March 2020. And whilst the absence figure had appeared to have reached a high, there's been encouraging signs that absence has started to reduce since that date. And from the data, we know that the proportion of long-term absence has increased over the last year and is therefore a priority that needs to be addressed. And that mental health reasons accounts for nearly 30% of all absences, and again, having increased significantly over the last 12 months. And therefore, supporting our staff to be mentally well at work needs to be a priority. Instead of going through all the detail of the report, I thought it would just be good to concentrate on what we're going to do to reduce sickness absence. So firstly, we want to make wellbeing a priority for the organisation. We want to establish a sustainable and resilient workforce group and we want to introduce a wellbeing, a wellbeing pledge which provides a commitment by HR and by managers to ensure that staff wellbeing is a priority and the basics of attendance management are undertaken. And then in terms of going back to the data, absence at the end of March was up to 10.9 days per FTE. And compared to our local authority benchmarking information that we've got, it's at the higher end, however, it's not the highest. And discussions taking place with those authorities about how, especially those with lower absence, about how they what their approaches to sickness absence are, and we'll be considering those within the Sustainable Resilient Workforce Group. So in terms of the main data, the main points, absence increased over the last year. Highest absence is in the people group, and this has always been the case. 45% of our workforce who have been in post over a year have had no absence at all in the last 12 months. Long-term absence as a proportion of short-term and long-term have increased and nearly makes it two thirds of all absences. And this has increased significantly over the last 12 months. And mental health is the highest reason for absence, nearly 30%, as an increase from 24.5% the previous year, with miskaliskalita being the second highest reason, which has reduced from 19.6 to 17% from the previous year. So I think that's the highlight. So if anybody's got any questions or points they want to raise.
I think I should kick off really on this. I appreciate that, you know, it's been a difficult time and it's worrying that our percentage on mental health colleagues has increased. I think that is a worrying sign and it, and I suppose what that does do is, is mean that we do really need to work on our health and wellbeing agenda in a bigger, better way. I know we're doing a lot behind the scenes and I know we've got the the occupational health therapist working alongside us, but I think we, we really need to start looking at what else we can do. Maybe look outside the box and see what other organisations are doing, especially where organisations have historically had staff working from home. I know it's new to our authority, but it's not new to many organisations outside Warwickshire County Council. So I think we need to do a bit of background work or a bit of work to see, okay, what's happening and who's doing what in order to stimulate and work with our colleagues who are struggling, let's face it, at the moment. So I think that's a key point to, to pick up out of the report. And the other is, I know I've, I've banged the drum about sickness, as have many of my colleagues on this panel, about the numbers going up, but I am also aware that we have had had colleagues who have been very ill with Covid over this period as well. So it's an unusual year. But what it does mean is we've got still a long way to go in order to support our staff. And I think pretty much everyone's got their hands up. So I'll go with John first and then I'll move on to Bill after that.
Good, thanks very much. Yeah, my, my first sort of question was relating to the high sickness rate because there was a, during one of the, I think it was chief executive briefings during the pandemic, it was commented that working from home had reduced absence. So I was extremely surprised by this dramatic increase. If you think it's an average over the whole of the organisation of one and a half days is a huge increase. So that was that first point, is there seemed to be a disconnect in what was verbally said, which I then duly pleaded to all my parishes and the facts as they come out, and I have no doubt that I will be picked up on that.
This report only takes us to the end of March 2020. So the 10.9 was at 31st of March 2020 and we started all working from home just a few days before that. So we have seen already quite a significant reduction and hope to see a better reduction as the year goes on with people working from home. So it is correct, but this report only takes you to the end of March.
So it was pre, pre epidemic, so doing what that was, other than mental illness. And the other, other question supplementary is that if it is mental illness, from previous in questions I've asked, it seems, most of it's not work related, is it? It's all home related.
Yeah, it's not all, there's, there's obviously a mixture of home and work related within that. And we don't record them as one or the other on the system. So that's our local intelligence with regards to what we get from occupational health. But yeah, certainly in terms of being a priority for the group, one of the things we'll be looking at is that kind of split of how much of that is work related and how much of it is.
Yeah.
It tends to be, you don't get one without the other in a lot of cases.
Well, yes, which comes first, the work or the home?
Yeah.
But certainly, certainly Stratford, from my experience as councillor in Stratford, that was all, most of it was home related. You know, people bring their home issues to work.
And don't forget, John, we are having the check-in surveys as well. We've been having these, I think, periodically throughout the last six months. I think we're on survey three, are we?
We are, we're planning survey four.
Yeah, so we've had three and again, those are being, you know, we've had really good responses from staff to say how they're feeling. They've been honest and open, which is good. So what that does mean is that we've been able to target or especially those who have put their hands up and said, look, I'm really struggling, I need your help. And that for us is good, so that we can really use our occupational therapists to, you know, really go in and help our colleagues who are, who are really struggling. So from that respect, I guess we are, it's good that the check-in surveys are happening. Bill, do you want to come in? And Neil, I've got you.
Yes, I won't go on about the, you know, the high rate compared to past years or whatever. I think the, what's been interesting is the comment Kate made that since March, the, with people working from home, the sickness rate has gone down. And that I know has been the case at Warwick District as well. So it's a, that's a fascinating.
So it's a, that's a fascinating thought, you know. But also, but the real, the real issue I think here is how we handle mental health. Because that is, A, the biggest single reason, but also I suspect it's the long term sickness, which is, and whilst the public get upset at the idea of somebody taking Friday and Monday off on sickness, it's the long term sickness that is the issue here.
Absolutely.
Long term mental health. On page seventy five, under six point four, you've got the first staff who are struggling with stress or their mental health reasons to the occupational health service, either before they go sick or on the first day of sickness. And that, it's tagging it early, seems to me to be very important. I just wonder whether we should, is it, have we considered talking to organisations like Springfield Mind and so on for advice? Where, to be blunt, the, it's costing us in, it's costing us well over a million pounds, the mental health issue. And spending a bit of that to get external advice that would take away a million from, 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 from a lot of our staff, might, as well as being helpful to us, might be worthwhile considering.
Absolutely, yeah. I'll take that for, that point forward. I think absolutely right, the, if we can get people refer to occupational health, either before they go off sick or as they go off sick, the biggest hardest thing for someone who is off with mental health issues is that, that struggle of coming back to work. And it tends to be the people who are off the longest, the harder that making that step is. So if we can get in, early intervention in, that's really good. We've also got obviously our employee assist programme as well, which offers counselling for members of staff. So encouraging staff to take that up as an offer. But certainly I'll investigate about the Springfield Mind and whatever organisations there are that might be able to help us. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Kate. Neil, do you want to come in?
Thank you. I've got about half a page of questions here and just about all of them have already been answered. You'll be pleased to know. You know, I mean, going on from what Bill was just saying, you know, leaving it until they're just going off sick is part of the problem. And whatever we can do to catch these people before they reach that stage must be advantageous to them and to us. So if, if we can get help from elsewhere, or even if there is a way to engage with health before that happens, whether we've got the capacity or the right, or, you know, there are all sorts of questions that that brings up, but, you know, a little bit of support a little bit earlier might help to avoid a lot of the, the situations. If, if we can manage it. I mean, what is really at the centre of this, this question is something that you brought up. Why are we so much higher than other councils? And you're already trying to address that to find out and so on. And the only other question that, that I'd like to put now is that you've said that we're having the, these surveys. Will those pick up the real results of those becoming to this group? Because, you know, the, the next report like the one that we've got in front of us is not for another six months. And that seems a, a long time to react to, to anything that's going on. It certainly comes as a surprise to me just now when John said that mental health issues and so on were actually falling. Because during this period, I would have expected them to have been rocketing up and, and us needing to, to give more support. And so it's, it's a good, a great surprise to find that that isn't the case.
I think that's just sickness absence.
We need to monitor it closely.
Yeah, I think it's sickness absence across the board that's falling. I'm not sure we've got the data to say whether that's with it. That includes mental health reasons as well or not. I think people are struggling. In terms of the check in surveys, as I say, we're just going to corporate board later this week to agree what the, the, topics of the next few check in surveys in terms of engagement and high performance culture. But certainly if it's a report that you think it will be helpful, I'm sure we can get them together.
One of the question, one of the points about it really is that it, it makes it very, very difficult because a lot of the people that are hit by mental health problems and stress and so on are the ones that are least likely to actually respond to the surveys.
Yeah.
Either way, I've said enough. I'll mute.
Thank you for that, Neil. What I will, what I would say is, having, having, having had conversations, I know that staff have been on, open and honest whilst they've been doing these check in surveys. And they have put their hand up if they have been struggling. I know that for sure. And that's a good thing, I think. You know, even if you are suffering from mental health, they're actually saying, look, we are, you know, we need extra support. And, you know, it is difficult, it is difficult because, you know, we can't force our staff to be open and honest, but for those who are, who have been, it's, it's been good because we can then give them that extra support that they need. And again, it helps, you know, if we are going to be brutal, it does help the sickness rates as well at the same time, giving that extra support. I've got, I think Barnaby, sorry, Neil, do you want to?
Creating the culture that it's not a problem that we're all in it together.
Absolutely, absolutely. I've got Barnaby and then John wants to come in.
Yeah, apologies, Chair. It's not really my place to speak and I should have looked at the reports prior to the meeting. I think I, but I didn't. I just think I should make the committee aware that we have linked our fire service rotor system to the, to the wider your HR system. And I've had, I've had a draft report through now for the same period, which actually shows a more accurate sickness count for fire and rescue with substantially lower count per FTE. And I do stress it was draft, but, and it was, and it's quite recent that John Green and his magicians have finished doing it. But, but we do make up ten percent of the workforce and so far sickness levels would come down to around the eight mark. It would affect the overall county council figures substantially. And I believe that to be the correct, well, the more accurate figure perhaps. And the other observation I might, well, if I may, is around long term sickness. I've only got some experience, obviously the fire service side of this. But I know that the IQMP process, the independent qualified medical practitioner process, which is linked to our pension scheme, has been much slowed down again by Covid. So for example, we have, we have three individuals who are currently long term sick, making their way through that process as they, they're definitely not coming back onto fire engines and they will be leaving us, but the process has been slowed down by coronavirus. I'll just throw that one in as well.
Thank you for that, Barnaby. John, did you want to come in?
Yeah, sure. It was just really this whole thing about high levels of, of sickness. I, I once was attached to an HR department in my life. And it's actually quite hard work, working in HR. The, you know, because I always do think HR were a load of sort of, you know, idlers.
Careful what you say, John.
Idler. But in fact, having worked in it, it was, it was actually quite hard. It's one of, organizational morale, sometimes, actually almost invariably, when you have high sickness rates, you have very low organizational morale. And I'm just wondering, it's the ESG type sort of argument, really the touchy feely stuff, whether, what is staff morale? I mean, I'm sure if you ask anybody in, you know, with a, a recording or whatever, or an identifiable response, they'd say it's sky high. And there was a buzz everywhere. But I just wonder, because, you know, it is odd that you get a low morale, people who are depressed or low morale get sick. And I'm just, just wondering if that is possibly one of the issues we need to engage.
And I think that's another positive thing that's happened since the pandemic response with, I think we've got a feeling that our staff morale has increased and our engagement has increased in terms of, as Cam was saying about the, you know, the check in servers and the response to those, et cetera. A check in for that we're proposing will cover the engagement questions, which is our measure of morale. So it'll be interesting to see how that's shifted from last year, whether it's increased or decreased or stayed the same.
Yeah, just a quick supplementary, if that's all right, Chair. How, how, has efficiency improved? Because although working from home means sickness is, is down, I know people don't record they're sick or want to stay at home for the day. Has, has, has efficiency gone up? Because I know when I, when I was working for another firm once, the joke was that when somebody rang up, they said, you know, oh, and I'm working from home today and you're in the supermarket, you know, and I was just wondering whether that's.
So certainly from a performance point of view, John, productivity has gone up. You'll be pleased to know. I know this because it's my portfolio, whole portfolio. So, you know, if I didn't know, you'd shoot me, you'd shoot me down now. But certainly productivity has gone up and we do have the stats for that. I think Sarah wants to come in as well. Sarah, I've got you.
I was just going to come in in response to councillor Horner's point about whether there's any connection between organisational morale and sickness. And, and, and this is one of the reasons why we want to explore it further and unpick it. Because when you look at our staff survey results, so the annual survey we do, our staff engagement figures have, have actually been reasonably high and have been reasonably high over, over the last few years. So it, it almost feels like the engagement of staff linked to morale is still high compared to other public sector bodies and other bodies generally. But still, we've got this sickness absence issue. So it's, it's quite hard, I suppose the answer is to try and sort of make those connections. But, but we, but we are wanting to delve into them a bit more and sort of try and work out whether there are any themes that are coming through that we do need to address.
Yeah. Thank you for that.
Thanks, Sarah. Oh, Neil, is that a historic hand or a new hand?
If I can just make a very quick comment about something that Barnaby said. That he said that it wasn't his turn to, to speak in, in the meeting. From my point of view, one of the values of these meetings is that everybody can join in the discussion. I think that that is very valuable. So that's my comment.
You've got that. Thank you very much, councillor.
Thank you for that. Okay, so I'm going to move to the recommendation I set, I set out on page sixty seven of the report. Are we all in agreement? And if we are, can we have a little show of hands, please? Excellent, unanimous, it's gone through. Okay, moving on to item seven, which is employee recognition. Is this you again, Kate?
It is, yeah. Sorry, you've got me again.
No, not a problem.
So in terms of employee recognition, the recommendation here is that the committee agrees that as recognition and appreciation for the exceptional response to the pandemic, that we grant an additional days, day off for all Warwickshire County Council staff, excluding schools. And with the offer of a financial adjustment to staff where that's not a practical option. So in terms of summary, the proposal is to provide a tangible gesture, gesture that recognises and shows appreciation for the response and contribution of its employees over the Covid nineteen response. As part of a wider report, corporate board have considered the option of recognise, recognition and thanking all employees for their exceptional response and contribution. Nationally, there's been a call from some trade unions to pay some kind of bonus. And so far, we know that two councils have made such a payment, but the majority have chosen not to. In terms of issuing an additional payment, it can be both controversial and divisive. We wouldn't want to make an artificial inappropriate distinction between our frontline staff and other staff and instead take a one council approach. Also, at this time, we are under financial pressure and uncertainty, particularly around the medium financial outlook and recognition that has a direct financial cost may be viewed negatively by the public. Therefore, as alternative methods have been explored. In terms of the financial implications of this recommendation, the actual cost would be around sixty five thousand pounds for making a small discretionary payment to those staff where it's not practical for them to have a day off, an additional day off, such as term and time only staff, seasonal staff, some of our firefighters. The notional cost of the extra day off would be around four hundred and fifty six thousand. And that's covering the salary paid for those people having that additional day off. And by comparison, if we were to give each staff member a cash payment of, say, fifty pounds, the actual cost would be around eighty, a hundred and eighty five thousand. Therefore, the cash option and the actual costs of having an additional day off, the cash option is higher than that, than if the proposal to have an additional day off. And it could be perceived actually that this is, the cash value would be lower value than a day's leave. So in terms of the proposal, it's to grant all WCC employees with an additional days leave for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one year, perceived as having a higher value to employees whilst at the same time relatively low in terms of direct costs. And it also gives back to family and friends and staff who have also made sacrifices during this time. In terms of, there will be some working time lost with this proposals, but it's likely to be compensated through increased goodwill and the feeling of being recognised and appreciated. There's a small discretionary payment for those unable to take the additional days leave as detailed in appendix one. And then the proposal does not apply to agency or casual staff or those employed by schools or other agencies. So is there any questions?
No, because I was actually thinking, what can we do to, to, for something for our staff? And I even said to the finance portfolio, can we do something in the park? And he said, no, because there's only six people allowed to congregate. So this sounds like a good option. So I, I'm, I'm very happy with the recommendation and I'm looking at the screen to see if anybody wants to comment. Bill wants to comment. You're still on mute, Bill.
Sorry, just, I just, I'm assuming that people will take the extra day when, whenever suits, basically.
It would just be added to their annual leave entitlement.
They're closing down on a Monday in October or anything like that.
We're not closing down just on Christmas Day, Bill, no. Okay, in which case, I think it looks like it's a unanimous agreement to the recommendation. All in favour? Raise your hands. Brilliant. There you go, Kate. Well done.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'll leave you now. Bye bye.
Okay. Okay, moving on to agenda item eight, which is the response to HM Treasury consultation on McLeod remedy for fire pension scheme. Who's going to pick that one up for us today?
That's me.
Ah, welcome back, Vicky.
Hello. Okay. So, so as the report says, this is about the age discrimination, the remedy that has been suggested by the Treasury. And there was certain questions raised in the consultation that we have put together a response on behalf of Warwickshire County Council and the fire service, as the fire service is part of the council. So the age discrimination is, within the remedy, it's offering two options of solution. The immediate choice and one is the deferred choice option for members. And in the consultation questions we've gone through and just put through our points on how we think this will affect the council and how we can administer that as a, as the pension scheme administrator.
Okay, thank you, Kate. Sorry, Vicky, Kate's just left. Are there any questions on this, folks? John, do you want to come in?
Yes, thanks very much. The, I, I get a, a magazine called Pensions Expert, which is an FT publication. And the one that came out September's issue is talking about McLeod. And there's, there's a question mark over the government's proposed solution. That there is an age discrimination in, in the proposed solution.
Yes, I think.
The challenge.
Yeah, I believe so. There has been a question raised towards, I think it's specifically the police pension schemes that have raised a point about further age discrimination. So that is being picked up on behalf of the police schemes. But looking at the recommendations for remedy, we haven't picked anything of that nature up for the fire schemes and that's the one that we'll be administering.
Yeah, but it's one of these things where it's all in or all, all out, isn't it? In the sense that, you know, if it suits the police, the police, each one is sort of, first of all, it was judges. It was fired to start with, then the judges got on the bandwagon and things started to happen. Then now it's the police, it's a rolling, it's a rolling attrition, if you like.
Yeah.
Effect the entire public sector index linked pension system, which the government thought it sorted out in two thousand and twelve. And the whole is completely unraveling and costs are going to be horrendous in the long term. You know, they're not just fire services, it's not just police, it'll be the entire public sector.
Yes. I think it's, I think it's worth, thank you for sharing the responses, Vicky. I think they've been helpful to understand our position at county. And I pretty much agree with it, to be honest. I think the sooner we get some sort of closure, the better, particularly for our staff and particularly for, you know, which way we want to go for certain. I can't see any further hands up. So the recommendation is to note the report, note and comment on the HM Treasury consultation questions and the draft response on the proposed amendments to the firefighters' pension schemes. I think we've done that. Please, can I have a show of hands to say you've noted and you're happy with it? That's brilliant, thank you, thank you, Vicky.
Lovely, thank you very much.
Okay, moving on again, we're on a similar, similar direction, aren't we? Consultation on the impact of the McLeod remedy of the local government pension scheme. Neil, I noticed you sent some responses over to us earlier. I'm not sure if councillors have had a chance to see that because they've been on other meetings. You may want to just run through them very quickly.
Good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, everybody. I wanted to give you a bit of a different background really as to the impacts on the LGPS opposed to the other public service pension schemes. In that, you recall that the changes to the LGPS, because we're a funded pension scheme, were introduced in 2014 and not 2015. And that was by way of an underpin. So where Vicky was talking about deferred option or people making a choice as to which scheme they want to be in, with the LGPS, it's fundamentally different in that people were being, those that were in scope, were entitled to the better of the old or the new scheme. And that scope, that basic principle, has been extended to cover younger members. There's an overall expectation nationally that very few members will be impacted. But there's an awful lot of work that still has to be done to review all the cases that have gone on, gone, you know, the retirements that have happened since 2014, dependents of people who have died since that time, any deferred pensions that have been issued since that time, and any transfers in and out will also have to be reviewed. So that's a massive administration task that's got to be undertaken. And it may well be for very little gain to individual members. Going forward for current members, it is anticipated that in their annual benefit statements, they will receive an indication about how McLeod will impact on them. But that review will also be undertaken again when they come to retire. So at that point in time, whether they're retiring from active service or whether they're coming from deferred benefit into payment, again, there will be a test undertaken to ensure that the better benefit is being awarded to them. Big things that have got to happen, obviously, is the administration team will have to contact everybody that falls within scope since they retired or left since 2014. Factors have got to be revisited, et cetera, for seeing how this impacts on people when they come to retire. And that's it, basically, for the LGPS. Happy to take any questions or if any of my colleagues want to help me out?
No, no, thank you for that. I mean, it's obvious to see that although the numbers are slow, the impact on admin is going to be tremendous to go through, you know, all of that work and try and find people for a start off, it's just going to be huge. So although the impact looks small, admin's going to be massive. Are there any comments, observations, councillors?
Chair, can I make one comment?
Yep, sure, Chris.
So with the LGPS consultation, we've just shared the draft response by email, but you've got the, you've already got in your papers, response on the fire side. Could I ask if we could have any comments over the next few days? What we need to do perhaps Thursday this week is finalise the draft responses to go through a portfolio holder report, and we need to incorporate if you do have any comments.
I've certainly had, I saw Neil's email come through earlier, so I've had a chance. But I think, as I said, we've had members that have been on the subcommittee this morning who won't have had a chance. So if councillors can do that and come back to yourself, Chris or Neil?
To Neil, please, yeah.
To Neil, okay, that's fine, thank you for that.
Thanks.
Okay, so the report, the recommendation on that is again for noting, can we agree? Okay, hands up, lovely, all, there you go, Neil, unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I think we're on item 10, are we now? Yes. I've seen Liz, so I think we are. So item 10 is pensions and admins activity and performance updates. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, this is the regular report that you now receive, just to update you on the activity that's going on on the pensions administration side as opposed to the fund investment side. Rather than just repeat everything that's in the report, I thought I'd draw out a few headlines for you. Overall, the performance of the team is really high and all of the activity is going well. We're continuing to implement the actions that are in the governance action plan and work our way through those. We've ticked some more off the list since we last reported to you last quarter. All of our year end activity is now completed. Year end processes do create additional queries and you'll see from the appendix on workload that there was a bit of an upturn in order for the team to deal with that increase in workload, but it's now starting to get back to business as usual numbers again. So we're on top of that. In terms of key performance indicators, you approved a new set of indicators for this financial year that brings us more into line with industry standards. And on 50% of those performance indicators, we are, we are at or better than target and we're quite close to target on a lot of the others. Where the, where the performance is slightly below target, it's largely because we've been focusing the team's resource on those indicators that result in us having to make a payment either to members or to members' dependents. So the ones that are falling slightly below target tend to be the ones where there isn't a critical payment due. And the other area where the indicators are slightly lower than target at the moment is where they relate to us having been notified of the death of a member. And the numbers of those thankfully are a lot lower than a lot of, the number of cases that we're dealing with are a lot lower than with many of the other indicators. So it only takes one or two where we don't quite hit the performance target to skew the overall performance figure. But obviously, we do need to make sure that we're on top of those. The iConnect project, which we briefed you on at the last meeting, which is where we are putting in place a system whereby our employers can submit their monthly data automatically. We suck the information out of their payroll systems and feed it into the pension system. So we automate all of that process. And the idea is that that creates much more accurate, timely information on which to do all of our pensions work. That project's going really well. We have now got the contract with iConnect in place, that's all signed and in place. And we're working with the first tranche of employers to get them onto the system in the next few months. So that's all positive. And in relation to the section on breaches in the report, implementing iConnect will significantly reduce the number of breaches that we have. The majority of our breaches relate to employers who don't submit their data on time. And obviously, if we're automating that process, then it will eliminate a lot of those issues where employers aren't giving us their information in a timely manner. There is one issue that we do need to alert the committee to, and this only came to light on Friday. We have a statutory deadline, regulatory deadline, where we have to issue members with their annual benefit statements by the 31st of August. We issued all the annual benefit statements for our deferred members well ahead of schedule. And we were on track to issue the statements for our active members well in time for the 31st of August deadline as well. We had all of the information with the printers in plenty of time and we had a date when they were going to issue those. It came to light on Friday that there was an issue with the printers and there were just under 5,000 of those statements that they didn't issue on time, which is really disappointing actually, because the pensions team had managed that project really well and made sure that everything on their part was in place, ready to go. So this is really disappointing. Those missing statements did go out on Friday, so they have gone out now. I can put my hand up and say I was one who, one of the 5,000, and I received mine today. So the problem has been remedied. We've been liaising with the printers and they're conducting their own investigation into what happened. And we'll also be liaising with the pensions regulator because we'll have to notify them as well and put them in the picture. The contract is between a local government communications group, it's not just a contract that sits with Warwickshire, it's wider than that. And this, the provider provides this service for four different authorities. And the contract manager, who's based at Staffordshire, is also looking into this and seeing what remedies we have within the contract for the fact that they didn't deliver on time. So it's a work in progress. The contract was last, was reviewed and renewed, went back out to tender two years ago and it's up for review again next year. And obviously, we'll be looking very closely at that on the back of this, this performance issue, but we felt it was important to let the committee know that that incident has happened. That was what I was going to say by way of introduction, but happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that, Liz. I'm sorry when the teams work so hard and you've been let down in the 12th hour, that's really disappointing. But we can see from the report that the teams worked really hard and performance has, as you said, you know, you've managed to improve on performance, particularly when you didn't have staff in the team as well. So it's good to know that you're full to back to capacity, let's put it that way. I nearly said got bums on seats, and I just have. But again, to, you know, keep the ball rolling. So thank you from me, because it's a really good read and a really good report. So I'm not sure, looking at the screen, if councillors have any observations, questions? Nope. There you go, Liz, that just proves how good your report was. Okay, so the recommendation is Staff and Pensions Committee notes this report. And can we just have unanimous hands if there are? Lovely, thank you, thanks, Liz.
Thanks to Vicky, actually, for the bulk of writing that report.
It's a good report, thank you. Okay, moving on, we have Staff and Pensions Committee regulatory update. And that's Neil again.
Hello, yes, me again, I'm afraid. And this would have been just the usual report that would have said this is where we are and what we're expecting, particularly with the exit cap. Unfortunately, funds were thrown a bit of a curve ball last week with the exit cap, and it's far more wide encompassing for LGPS members with local authorities than was first expected. Members will know that when a member of the local government pension scheme is aged 55 or older, retires on employer sponsored basis, redundancy or efficiency of the service, that they're paid their benefits automatically and the employer has to compensate the pension fund for the early payment of those benefits. And what the government have come out with as a proposal, or what's going to happen is, is that because this entitlement is better than in the other public service pension schemes, they're looking at a way that they can restrict the benefit that is available to the LGPS members. And they're going to achieve this by way of where a strained figure arises and an individual is going to receive a redundancy payment, that redundancy payment will only be paid on a statutory basis, there'll be no severance payments involved. And that statutory redundancy payment will be clawed back from the person's early retirement benefit pension. So by way of an example, if the retirement strain for the early release of the benefits was £50,000 and the statutory redundancy payment was £5,000, then the employer will pay £45,000 to the pension fund as an exit strain. And the £5,000 will be annualised and reduced from the member's pension. Now, this means that the employee on retiring on redundancy or efficiency will have some choices. And they are, they can take the adjusted pension and the statutory redundancy payments, or they can take the reduced pension and statutory redundancy payment and severance, severance being the top up that the county council, for example, would pay on redundancies. Or they can take a preserved benefit which becomes payable at their normal pension age and a full statutory redundancy pay and severance payment. Or if they earn over £95, oh, sorry, if the exit payment is more than £95,000, they can, from their own resources, pay into the pension fund to offset any reduction. While we're not certain of that, this is a massive change for the administration system providers, their systems are not geared up for this yet. So there will be a leading time for this to happen. So when the legislation comes in, which is expected to be early January, the admin team will be involved in doing manual adjustments to benefits. There will be people out there who've probably had indications of early retirement benefits on redundancy or efficiency who may be impacted from this, by this. Our understanding is from the LGA that any quotes that have been provided will cannot be honoured because once these regulations come in, it would, to do so would be an illegal payment. What is not clear also, and the LGA are checking this for funds as well, is which scheme employers this actually applies to. So we know for a fact that it's local authorities, but for example, we're not sure if this also applies to academies or colleges of FB, et cetera. It is out as a consultation, but the understanding is that basically this will be coming in.
Personally, I think it's a mess.
And, you know. Private company, it would be called fraud or theft or, you know, not honouring the contracts that they've already entered into, but because it's a government, they can get away with it.
I think the odd thing is, is that, you know, these things have been kicking around for five years and for all of a sudden to just be landed on the desk and to say this is going to happen, it's causing a great deal of, like I say, administration work for the funds and also for the employers as well, as to how they're going to have to manage this. I'll see Sarah's going to give me some.
No, no, Sarah, do you want to come in on this?
Yeah, it was only to add, Chair, that my understanding as of probably quite late last week, but I don't know if it's managed to trickle through, is that there's expected to be a further consultation on these proposals on the basis that if you were to pursue a individual employee's case on the basis of applying the cap, you would therefore be in breach of the pensions regulations. So you either breach the pensions regulations or you breach the cap regulations, and neither is satisfactory. And the legislation as it's proposed at the moment creates that problem or that disconnect between those two sets of regulations. And so there's a further consultation about how that should be taken forward and what the outcome should be, because at the moment it'd be very difficult for employers to do one course of action without, you know, potentially being at risk in terms of the other set of legislation.
So in terms of, for us then, Sarah, I know you're clicking off, but what does that mean? Do we need to resource the admins team more or what's the timings around this then? Because Neil just mentioned 2021, I think, January 2021. Would we still be looking at the same time? Would we still be looking at the same time sort of framework?
Potentially, I think we need to keep a watchful eye on any further consultation that comes out. We have responded as an authority before, but we've also responded through member bodies of which we're part of, along with other local authorities, so as part of the West Midlands employers and so on. I think we need to take those opportunities when they arise and keep a watchful eye on the, on the timeframes for this. And discuss obviously with colleagues in pensions about what, what the impact may be as and when we're a bit clearer on the timings.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. Are there any questions from, from councillors around this piece? No? I think it's, it's one of those, we'll have to wait and see, won't we, really? See what happens going forward. But would it be possible to see the response to the further consultation as well, Neil? If that's okay, that would be helpful. Okay, so the recommendation is committee notes and comments on the report, all in agreement? Lovely, thank you. We're nearly there, John, we're nearly there. Thank you, Neil.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, revised terms of reference for the local pension board.
Just going to say, don't include my comments about fraud in the minutes, please.
Agenda item 12, we're being recorded.
After all that you wish to.
Okay, moving on, recommendation is Staff and Pensions Committee are invited to review and comment on the updated terms of reference for the local pensions board before forwarding to council for approval. Chris, as if by magic, you've appeared on my screen.
So just a very short introduction to this. This has been to the local pension board for comment. And the changes are broadly informed by the Scheme Advisory Board's guidance on the kinds of things that ought to be in terms of reference for a local pension board. They've been reorganised quite a lot, so rather than having a terms of reference with chat changes, which, which is really chaotic because we've reordered things, I've done a little table in the covering report just highlighting the things that have been updated. But it's just overdue to comment. The next stage would be to go to council who ultimately approve the local pension board terms of reference.
Thanks, Chris, I think that, I think I said this to you before, I think that chart's really helpful to make the comparison. Councillors, do you have any observations, comments on the report? No? There you go, Chris, it's a nice and easy one for you.
Thanks very much.
Okay, all those in favour, can we have a show of hands just for the record? Lovely, unanimous. Okay, we're getting there, we're getting there. I think we are now on item 14, is that right?
Chair, you will need to do the exclusion paragraph at item 13.
Yes, please, because I'm assuming this is supposed to be on purple, so that would be helpful. Thank you, Isabel.
So Chair, you need to recommend that the members of the public be excluded from the meeting for the items mentioned below on the grounds that their presence would involve the disclosure of exempt information as defined in paragraph five of part one of Schedule 12A of the Local Government Act 1972.
Okay, thank you for that.
Seconded.
Lovely. Thank you for that, so I think.